Being approved or not, something related to-
Something out of our control.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think you could say that at this point, given Governor Noem's executive order that she was issuing today that was going to be effective through May 31st, that even the one on May 30th would be very questionable to have a public gathering at that time.
You made, who made, you made the motion?
I made the motion.
Are you okay with-
I'm okay to go ahead and do what Justin's been talking about and Stephen.
Okay. So are we okay with that then?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have our motion and our second. Pending, it will be up to me to approve or revoke it if necessary due to the coronavirus, basically. Right?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Chark.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher. McCartl.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input, excuse me, if you need to address mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered but no action will be taken at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Okay, a couple of things I want to bring up. We had, first of all, last Thursday, we had our meeting with LEPC and Queen of Peace. You've heard talk of the homemade masks. This is what they're referring to. It is double-sided cotton, I guess, and it does help. It's more of a big particle removal. And also, if you were to have the virus, it kind of helps contain it within you. The other thing that goes with that that adds to its protection is a face mask. This is what you're going to see the first, or the medical personnel using. And Queen of Peace has started using these masks as well along with their M95s. With that, we had a conference call with Governor Noem today. She issued a new executive order that takes out to May 31st, and it replaced where she said you should do these things with you shall do these things. In essence, it's no more than, follow CDC guidelines, no more than 10 people gathering, keep social distancing, all the things that were being recommended. She said you shall do those now. One thing she did do is Lincoln and many haha counties were put on a shelter in place for anybody 65 years and older, and also for anybody that has a medical condition that would be more susceptible to the coronavirus. That will be for three weeks. School has been let out through May 31st, which means our city facilities will remain closed through May 31st. One thing she pointed out is they think there might be up to 70% of the population get this, and 5% will require some major medical assistance with it. So it's still a big, big possibility that it'll spread here. Fortunately, in Mitchell residents seem to be doing well with the spacing and, social spacing and whatnot. We've only seen our three. Two are recovered. Hopefully, we can keep those numbers low. Sioux Falls is taking off with it. They had 38 additional cases today. We're at 288 in the state right now. Sioux Falls, Beetal County are the two big ones. Beetal County did not see any additional come out today, or the last couple of reports. So, you know, they're hopeful maybe they might be getting up to the top. We do expect we will eventually see social, or excuse me, community spread. We're hoping not. If we can keep staying at three, that'll make me feel a lot better, but just be cognizant of what you're doing. You know, wash your hands frequently, keep social distancing, and remember that we're doing this to protect the, not just your own self or one self, but those that can, are susceptible to the virus as well. And we also had a mayor's conference call. Of course, Sioux Falls was kind of happy with what the mayor announced, or the governor announced. You know, most of the cities are kind of moving towards something like this or something like we have. Sioux Falls is still less than 10 people. They did not change their ordinance at all. It just continues to go. Beetal, as I said, Beetal County has 21, but none in the last couple of days. Many hahas at 38, Lincoln's at 24. So roughly 50% of the cases in South Dakota are coming through Sioux Falls area. Brown County, Yankton County, and Connington County are all in the double digits, and Lawrence County has nine. So it's working its way up there as well. Like I said, we're very fortunate. We've only had three thus far. School closures, they say they feel took a large percentage of, we've actually lowered the curve. You know, it was a sharp, steep, pointed curve, and it's flattened out quite a bit. They feel the school closures had a lot of, large percentage of why that happened. Businesses like Walmart starting to go to their spacing where they only allow X number of people in per square foot has helped approximately 6% in their eyes, and other businesses that closures such as the bars and whatnot were about a 15%, a reason for 15% reduction. So those are the latest numbers from the state and the mayors across the state. Okay, with that, anybody else have anything for public discussion?
I've had a lot of questions about playgrounds. How are we, what are our thoughts about-
Our playgrounds are open yet because it's really, it's very, how do you enforce it? If we close them, you know, the only way to enforce it is to have somebody stand there and physically watch them. So most cities have not closed playgrounds yet.
My daughter lives in San Diego, and they have them just cordoned off, and no one can even walk in the parks. And I think it's one of those things that if, you know, someone is there. I don't think we need to go to that extreme, but certainly we know that the virus lives on metal and plastic.
For up to 72 hours, yes. We did, we did take the basketball hoops down at Cadwell, or not Cadwell, Hitchcock Park. We did have roughly 30 people a night playing, gathering in a group and playing basketball. So I asked Mr. Powell to take those down, so we no longer have that. I understood the school was going to do likewise for their facilities. I don't know if they have yet or not, so we've kind of eliminated that. We have not put the volleyball nets up, right, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, we're leaving the volleyball nets down. They were down for the winter, of course. And we had put up the tennis court nets, but we haven't had to take them down yet because we just haven't decided that was something that needed to be done. But playgrounds are monitoring, like Spearfish's, their playgrounds are still open. There's a, there's, most of the playgrounds are closed throughout the state, but there are a few that are still open. It just depends, I think, on overcrowding. I mean, we just had some cold weather, so it's getting warmer now, so we might see some, some change in that. But it'll be up to, up to the mayor here. But we are monitoring parks nationwide and also within the state as well and having these conversations. We're pretty well in line with what everybody else is doing in the state right now.
Are there any cleaning recommendations that we could look at, or are there any?
No, there's no, for the playgrounds?
Yes.
There's no cleaning recommendations. It's either close them or, it would be recommended to close them, not clean them.
How long do you anticipate leaving the hoops down? Because I've had people calling me on that, because they say, why is it fair to have the hoops down and have the tennis, you know, tennis courts open, or skateboard parks open?
We can take the tennis courts down.
Yep, yeah, it's just, it was evolving as we-
I think the difference is, Kevin, is that there was up to 20 people on one basketball court where at the tennis courts, you typically have two people playing per court. And there were several instances around town with large groups gathered on the basketball courts.
Well, the swing sets are the same way. So if you're going to take one, you should take them all, what I say.
Well, we can close, our problem is we can't enforce the parks.
And parks are open. There are, there are specific areas in the country that have overcrowding issues, but here, we won't, probably won't see that, and that's why they're, they're closing. But nationwide, most parks and trails are remaining open.
And statewide, most cities have taken down the basketball rims.
That's correct, yes.
Nate didn't state that earlier, but-
And we could take down tennis nets, I guess. I don't know. That's typically a sport played by two people who are quite a ways apart, or four. But I don't have a problem closing the tennis courts if we want.
That's great. And we, we had put out a few bases, but we're leaving the bases off the fields right now. And, I mean, we're just kind of not opening things up as we get warmer.
Yeah, I personally think, you know, we leave it up to Nate's department to keep an eye on it and see what goes on in our parks. I mean, I think our community has done a great job on their social distancing. I just think we start jumping into some things without having any type of issue. You know, not like I'm driving around town all the time. I know, Kevin, you've done quite a bit, and I know, obviously, you've got nothing else to do, Danny. But, you know, I think we sort of keep an eye on it ourselves.
Kind of below the belt, wasn't it?
But, you know, more monitor within their department if we have to get to the closure of the parks. I mean, you know, we're all trying to get through this, obviously, as a community and as a state and as a nation. And you got to have some kind of lifestyle of living yet a little bit to keep our sanity, I guess, sort of check. And I don't think that issue is quite here yet as our parks, from what I've been seeing. And I just think, I think your department should monitor itself, Nate, and then make the decision when it's time to come. So my personal feeling.
We're also on conference calls with SDPRA as well, and we're trying to stay in line with the rest of the state as well.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Mayor, we did get one other comment that the Memorial Day weekend that was scheduled for March 30, or May 31st has been postponed until a later date, too, just for public information.
Okay, that was the big friends, little friends thing? Okay, thank you. There's no question, they don't expect the peak of this till July. So it's going to be a mess. We, I'm guessing we most likely won't have a pool open this year during the summer. There's a question, we're looking at parking rec programs. Do we open them? I'm thinking we probably won't. So that's news to you, I know, Nathan, but sorry.
This is just a comment. I stopped for gas at Graham's and had a little conversation with Tyler, and he mentioned that over the weekend, and between the two days, and if he's watching, sorry if I mess up these numbers, but basically, over 100 vehicles, one day they, I think he said they had like 62 from Minnesota headed for the river, and then, you know, they stop in Mitchell, and then the next day Nebraska, Iowa, and Minnesota. And I know that we can't, we've discussed that we really can't close the borders of our city, but, you know, certainly, we need to be aware that as the states around us close, those people are, by nature, filtering our way. And we may just want to monitor our own lakes, our own docks, and, and see if, you know, see what's happening in terms of out-of-state people coming, and if we need to take any action there as well.
That's, yeah, I don't know how, that's a tough one to do. I don't know. Minnesota, interestingly, that's a shelter in place state, so obviously, they're not listening. So that shows you how enforceable it is.
And it really, that really is something that probably needs to come from the state. But maybe if we anecdotally can, you know, show those things are happening.
Okay, anything else? Okay, action to table discussion on one-way versus two-way streets for Second, Third, and Fourth avenues to April 20th, and that will be pending what's going on with coronavirus. I kind of believe this will actually get tabled out even farther. The reason we tabled it is we assume we'll have a pretty good crowd come in here, and we want to keep social distancing. So we didn't want to end up bringing a great number of people into here and not keeping social distancing.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anybody in the house wish to address it? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Action to approve per and rough rescue for rods and paws event, closing the block 100 of North Main and parking lot closures at First and Raleigh and north of 107 North Main for car show and fundraising event for May 30th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor and council, so this is a request that came in for a street closure and, and actually, the parking lot closures between First and Second Avenue. So we had no problem with this. Again, it was scheduled before the pandemic and the governor's recommendation to close. Again, we would have no opposition to this if it was moved out to another date. It was scheduled for the weekend after the, the Memorial Day weekend, street closure as well. But we have no objection to this if it was moved out even further.
My name is Gill, and I'm the president of Per and Rough Rescue. We're just asking for this one day. I understand this virus, coronavirus is in effect. If need to be, we're willing to reschedule or replan it. As of right now, we have a lot invested into this right now. We got our insurance certificate that we needed, our tax exempt. We have vendors already lined up. We have, you approved last, last meeting, our, our 50/50 rail, our fortification ticket sales. We're just asking, it's from 11 to 4:00 PM. That's the only times.
I think our only issue here is the governor's order goes until May 31st, which means you technically can't have more than 10 people gathering at one time.
And I understand that now.
So could you look at moving it a week, or talk-
We can reschedule. We can re, replan it for another time.
Okay.
I mean, I understand it's probably not going to happen this summer as, as much as it's getting deeper and deeper now. You know, safety comes first. That's my concern, safety. And I don't want a bunch of sick people. So, I mean, if we have to reschedule or replan for fall or later towards Christmas time, that's, that's no problem either.
I think it would be good if you go, what if we tabled this, and you go back and kind of look at a date, and maybe see if you can bring another date to us later in the year? Because it doesn't make any sense for us to approve something that you can't have.
Exactly.
Okay. Are you okay with us tabling this?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, move to table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Barrington. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Action to approve contingency funds of $14,000 for part-time work at the Public Works Street and Sanitation Division. Mr. Croce.
Mr. Mayor and council, again, we had planned for utilizing part-time help this year. We had scheduled it on the hours for the 12 weeks that we used for, for part-time help. We did not have this in our 2020 budget initially, and just would like to make sure that it's tracked, because we usually have estimated future budgets on the past three years. So if there was a line item to say that we had budgeted this amount for 2020, that would help us for future budgeting. But we also understand that we probably wouldn't go with part-time until the, until the mayor's direction was changed. So we're really up to the council for discussion and approval or disapproval.
Kevin, if this never got approved tonight, how can you work this in with the help that you have to be a little more efficient? Could it work? Could you make this work?
Kevin, with street superintendent, I guess what I look at it is, over the years, we've always had summer help for our chip ceiling projects and everything. With a few of the other departments, maybe Parks Department and maybe the Corn Palace, that ain't quite so busy. There is a chance that we can get some help from their employees, and we can make it work. The big thing is our chip ceiling projects and stuff. I mean, it takes more staff. I mean, we borrow every year from other departments other than the typical summer help. So it's more people than we have on staff, but we can, we can make it work one way or another, especially if I borrow people from other departments without the summer help.
Thank you.
We did discuss that the department has a meeting today sharing people, because right now, it looks like some of them are going to run out of things to do, and-
There you go.
We don't have the ability to hire part-time staff at this time, so.
And I, I guess, I wrote, when I read this, I just wrote myself a note about 2020 contingency money at this time, and the sales tax revenue projections indications really are only going to be a guess. We'll have a better idea probably a month from now at least to see what happens in the month of April with the current level of, of non-movement, I guess, if you want to call it that. And I know it's, it's $14,000, and that's, can be viewed as maybe not that much, but maybe it is quite a bit. But just, I mean, we could be seven figures short, millions of dollars short on budget this year. And I guess if we could at least delay the approval of this, and if it could be brought back, I guess I would appreciate that. So I, at this point, I'd move to deny this request at this time.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Allen. Danny, was that you?
Yes.
Yeah, one Marty.
You're farther away, it's hard to pick up-
It wasn't Marty, I'll tell you.
Further discussion? Anybody in the house wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Excuse me. Opposed nay? Motion carried. That's not, I had, was in working with insulation all last night, and that's, yeah. Action to approve agreement 820-20-15, Norway Avenue and Raleigh, share use path improvements, project 2020-23 with McLaurie Engineering. Mr. Croce, or Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Schrader.
Joe Schrader, city engineer. Mr. Mayor, council, this is an agreement to complete surveying services with McLaurie Engineering. We were awarded a $400,000 grant to complete sidewalk improvements on Norway from Burr to Raleigh, and on Raleigh from Norway to Cabela Drive. And with that, we are required to do a boundary and encroachment survey as part of the DOT requirements. And that firm must be on the South Dakota Department of Transportation's retainer list, which McLaurie is. Staff recommends that city council approve of the attached proposal for McLaurie Engineering for amount not to exceed $4,640 for the surveying services.
And that's a $400,000 survey for 4,600?
No, the, we got a $400,000 grant. The entire project cost is $1,036,000.
Move to approve. So on, on the map, you had the area excluded under the interstate. For the right of way, does the state do that, then? Is that-
So that is a separate project that we already have an agreement with, with the SD DOT.
Okay.
That is a cost-sharing project as well. I believe we're under $50,000 total for that portion.
And that will do the, under the bridge part for where we got to try and get a sidewalk and-
Correct.
If there's embankment stuff we got to do.
There's also embankment improvements that the DOT is doing, and those, that type of work.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Anybody in the house wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Action to award bids for James Belichick Community Center drive-up window and parking lot improvements.
Mr. Mayor, council, bids were opened on March 11th in City Hall Council Chambers at 1:30. One bid was received by Pitts Corporation, an amount for $74,900. Bid Schedule A was[1435.64][1435.66]$40,830.73, which is improvements inside the building. Bid Schedule B was for outside work, which came to $7,093.53. And bid Schedule C is for install work outside the building, curb and gutter, sidewalk, those types of improvements, for $26,975.74. The city has been awarded a $40,000 grant for this project, and the city will have to do $10,000 matching in order for this to happen. Staff is recommending awarding bid schedules A and C to Pitts Corporation in the amount of $67,806.47. And the city is planning on completing the removals in conjunction with repairing the JVCC parking lot.
Okay, move to approve Schedule A and C to Pitts Corporation.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Anybody in the house wish to address it?
What, what would be the timing?
They're, they want to start as soon as possible, is what I've been told.
Fortuitous for us, because it lets the senior, if they, once they get it done, the seniors-
Drive-up meals.
So, yeah, yep. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Action award bid for public safety building, re-roofing project 2020-16.
Bids were opened on March 31st in City Hall Council Chambers at 1:30. One bid was received by Weathercraft Roofing for a total bid amount of $169,000 for bid Schedule A, and there were no bids submitted for bid Schedule B. Larry Jurza was the architect on the project. He had an engineer's estimate of $185,000, so we were under that estimate. Larry also, Mr. Jurza also has worked with Weathercraft Roofing in the past, and he says he's never had any problems with them, and they're a good contractor. So with that, staff recommends awarding bid Schedule A to Weathercraft Roofing in the amount of $169,000. It should be said, for bid Schedule B, which we did not receive a bid on, we plan on going and getting quotes. That work consists of installing a composite decking over the top of a patio area. So we'll go and get quotes for that portion of the project.
Joe, if I remember right, there was, when this was first brought up last fall or whenever, there was some specific needs that need, or that had to get done immediately. Did we accomplish that?
Yes. In bid Schedule A, that does include the angled roofing over the doorways that leaks were really bad at, as well as repairing the leaks on the roof itself. So the work that needs to get done is going to be done.
One other question I have, we have a contingency of $33,334 listed on here. Is that 2020 contingency money? Is it-
Budget estimate. We do have the ability to take some, if you see the other items there, the supplemental, and then from the money designated for the future fire station, and then as well as from 911 reserves. So that's the additional 66 on top of the 150 that we had to start. So I don't know if we're really going to need that contingency now, because the budget came in less, or the bids came in less.
So we do potentially have plans to try and use money from existing or other items before we'd have to go to contingency.
This is one we talked about about a month ago?
Month, yeah.
Right.
Where we were actually thinking it might be $250,000 or $240,000, and it actually came in at 165. So way better bids than we anticipated.
Okay. So our first three items are the three budget items there. From there, we thought we were going to need $100,000. We had $33,000 identified from general fund reserves for that future fire station, 30, well, and some odd change, 33, 333 from E911 reserves. So-
Oh, and the other contingency was to make up the 100,000 total. Okay, okay.
Yep. So actually, we came out far better than we expected to, so.
It should be noted, there is also some tuck point work that still needs to be done, and also some window ceiling.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Allen. Mrs. Charks, did you say that? Thank you. I didn't hear it, that's why.
Second.
Okay. That's unusual for your voice not to carry. I don't know what- All right, we have a second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anybody in the house wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Second reading ordinance, 020-20-03, supplemental appropriations.
At the first reading, I did a full review of all the items on the supplemental ordinance. Nothing has changed from that time, so I'll just open it up for any questions. We didn't make any changes. Just because of the discussion the mayor said earlier with the budget shortfalls, to let you know, there is 600, approximately $600,000 from 2019 that remains unspent. So we're kind of earmarking that towards the shortfalls in 2020. So- So, um, as the mayor said, we started those conversations, department heads did with the mayor, where, where we can come back to make up those shortfalls that we're gonna see due to sales tax revenue decline.
Uh, the only question I have in a lot of these are, are Sanborn, I mean, money for our Sanborn project. Do we have any other update other than what was reported of when they're gonna potentially start, either on East Central or on, um, the Sanborn project?
Joe Schrader, City Engineer. Um, right now, Sanborn's planned to start April thirteenth. Um, the contractor pushed it back one week, uh, just to see how things are gonna pan out with COVID-nineteen. Um, East Central Phase One, uh, contractor is mobbing and equipment today, and he plans on starting Wednesday.
They, they have a pre-con on Tuesday, is that right?
We're meeting with, we're meeting with, uh, East Central Project tomorrow at nine.
Yes, tomorrow.
In the morning.
Yes, Tuesday's already here. Okay.
Um, Phase Two is currently, um, we're in the process of possibly getting a grant for that project. It'd be an eighty percent grant. Um, we're kind of in the final stages of that submittal, and we hopefully know, um, in the next month with bidding in June and starting construction shortly after.
I would just add to that, too, just for the general public, 'cause we've gotten some questions on why are we still doing projects with potential revenue shortfall? Both of those projects, including the bridge work, the bridges, um, grant-funded, the rest two are, the other two are financed or potentially grant-funded. So they are not something that we would be taking out of our general fund operations this year anyways.
Okay. Not to mention, we don't want another heavy rain down there. Thanks. Okay, further discussion?
Of approval of twenty, twenty twenty oh three.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rice?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address it? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty oh three, or, is that you? Now, you're not carrying very.
So moved.
You're not carrying very well, what's up with that, the distance thing? Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Rice, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address it? Roll call, please.
Charks. Aye. Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned.